Call the meeting to order. Clerk Walter Percevitz, would you call the roll of the members, please?
Dave Abdulla?
Here.
Thomas Berry?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Margaret Horvath is absent. Joseph Kaczynski?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a corner.
Thank you. I will be led in a pledge of allegiance by a member of the American Legion, Jim Pease.
Thank you, I'm honored to do so. Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for those people who perished in the last few storms that we had in Texas and in Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the Order of Business, September 12th, 2017, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council with exclusion of Item 9B.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Do it right after this motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item, before we do the approval of the agenda, we have a matter from Councilman Abdulla.
Mr. Chair, I just want to change my vote to a no vote on Item 13A from the previous city council meeting. This is the one, the request for parking signs on Kenlock.
So noted, it was 13A.
Seventeen to ninety-six.
From a yes to a no.
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Does that change the outcome of the?
It doesn't.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also wanted to do that, change my no vote to a yes vote, or, excuse me, a yes vote to a no vote.
A yes vote to a no vote.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I gave an opinion earlier, which I believe I saw over at the city clerk's office, indicating that this idea of changing votes after a meeting has already taken place is very questionable under the Open Meetings Act. I had also indicated in that opinion that I hadn't fully studied it, but that tentatively it was very questionable that you could end up changing votes and then end up having minutes changed to reflect something that didn't actually take place in reality.
Well, yeah, I set the rule, Councilman Berry?
I have a question, I apologize. I'm not an authority of the Robert Rules of Order, but it was my understanding that if you were to want to change your vote, it would have to be before the beginning of the next meeting, and we've already begun this meeting.
Before the adoption of the minutes, that's why we did it before the minutes from the last meeting were approved. So that was the idea.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, my opinion stands, I think it's very questionable, given the Open Meetings Act, whether or not it's in Robert's Rules of Orders, it's superseded potentially by state law.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't change the outcome of the vote, but both, I had talked to Councilman Abdulla about this previously, and I wasn't aware of Councilman Muscat, but, I mean, we'll note that, and it doesn't change the outcome of the?
Right, I guess, do you want me to end up actually researching and giving an opinion about this, so that I can give some definitive guidance, so we don't end up potentially running afoul of the Open Meetings Act?
Well, how would it be a violation of the Open Meetings Act?
Because basically you have decisions that are supposed to be made in a meeting through deliberation, the records of those meetings are supposed to end up reflecting what ended up actually taking place, and now you're changing it to reflect something that?
Well, yeah, so before we adopt the minutes, the members say, I want to change my vote from, if it doesn't change the outcome, I don't see how it violates the Open Meetings Act.
No, if you don't want me to look into it, I can only say?
And so long as there's been no meeting about it either, I mean, there's not been a meeting about, I mean, whether it's this item or any other item with like four council members or five council members.
That was a traffic control device, placement of a traffic control device.
But I see the council's opinion, he's talking about in terms of maybe other issues down the line?
Correct.
Where maybe it does change the vote.
And it could be very significant to?
I think it'd be important to find out, the legalese on this.
I don't, so I think we should put enough on attorneys.
You decide.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting, on August 26th, 2017, be approved, submitted.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item five, any comments on pending agenda items on our agenda tonight from the audience? Any comments? Any comments on any of our items on our agenda tonight from anybody in the audience?
I have something.
Go ahead.
Referring back to the discussion that we just had, are you directing the clerk's office to change those two votes? I just need to know.
You know, just to have the minutes reflect that the members said to change their, voiced their interest in changing their votes, that that's the record to say that that's what they wanted to do. The effect or not, I suppose probably we really should have the city attorney look at and see if that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Just so the, the minutes will be amended to say that Councilman Abdulla and Councilman Muscat moved to say that they, before we adopted the minutes, that they changed their vote.
Okay, that wouldn't, that wouldn't reflect in last meeting's minutes, because that didn't occur at the last?
Right, so that would be in this, this meeting's minutes.
You're talking about recording that information in the present?
Yeah, and for this meeting.
Yeah.
That, you know, Councilman Abdulla and moved to change their vote, and might even put that the city attorney suggested, and we agreed, that we do research whether or not that violates the Open Meetings Act.
So you do not want the vote changed from last meeting?
So the minutes from this meeting?
No, no, I just need to know, do you want the votes changed from last?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
I have an opinion, if they instructed to change their vote, then I think he should be changing their vote, I don't think it's, they asked to change their vote.
Right, what we're talking about is the minutes, you know, what's written in the minutes, so, yeah, I think the minutes should record that, the legal impact of whether or not they can, they can do that, and that's something that needs to be?
Shouldn't that be in the minutes of the next council meeting, that they requested the vote be changed, but initially, he needs to change their vote, whether it has an outcome on the agenda item or not, irrelevant, it's the fact that they've asked that their vote be changed.
Yeah, just to record that in the meetings from, the minutes from this meeting.
I guess the problem that the clerk appears to be having is the idea of, if it's not clear that legally you can do what you're doing, he has a problem with potentially changing something in a way that would violate the Open Meetings Act, potentially?
Right, so what I'm saying is, he will, he will just record, I suggest that the clerk just record the request in the minutes for this meeting, then you do your research and?
And then come back.
So I guess to answer your question is no, for as of now, no. The next item on the agenda, item six, fund transfers and current claims. Fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move to approve Current Claims 6-1 through 6-30.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski, any discussion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did we vote on the minutes?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Thank you, Dave.
Fund transfers and current claims, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item seven, consideration of bids, tabulation of bids for 2017 paving program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski?
I move council agree to move forward on the 2017 paving project for Valley View and Lewis Manor, per the recommendation of Director Zimmer, supported by Wade and Trim, at a cost of $1,008,910. All detailed in 7A, and under a letter published and written September 5, 2017.
Mr. Chair, just correction, it's $1,054,010.
Plus the engineering budget for Wade and Trim?
Oh, I see, okay, totally.
Support the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
Is, is support by Councilman Abdulla, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I'd like to know, is this the same contractor that did this subdivision the last time?
No, it isn't.
Thank God, thank you.
I also had a quick question, do you know, I had some residents ask, do you know anticipated start time on this, as far as the construction is concerned?
They anticipate toward the end of the month.
For the end of this month?
Right, and be done before November 1st.
And it includes Fairwood Street, correct?
Yes, part of Fairwood, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
The Councilman Kaczynski?
We have to also add to the motion that the bid deposits of in succession letters be returned to the appropriate destination.
If support's acceptable?
That was, Councilman Abdulla?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8A, from Mayor Dan Pletko, Van Born Corridor Improvements, the streetscape plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski?
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council agree to participate in the Van Born corridor upgrade, including option number four. The city share of the project is 56,000, all at the request of Mayor Pletko under 8A, letter dated September 5, 2017.
Support.
Signatures of the agreement are appropriate by the mayor and the clerk.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton, and we'll just note, we did have a study session prior to our meeting, and the other half of this expense is going to be shared by the city of Taylor that we share the Van Born Road with. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Abdulla?
I think we'll look to the residents, because this is, I mean, this is a major undertaking that we're going to be taking on as a city, to just maybe get some sort of a briefing as far as what this is all about. I think the mayor would probably be the best person, he's the one that's been involved with us, to talk about this.
Thank you, Councilman, we're really excited about this. This is a joint project between the city of Taylor and the city of Dearborn Heights, to take the Van Born corridor all the way from Meester Road to Pelham, and to come up with a plan. We have the Ford Motor Company that is taking over the Masco operations, and will have over a thousand employees there, plus visitors, and we believe this is going to be an economic shot in the arm, and so, the idea is to do a joint plan between the two communities to spearhead and stimulate economic development from a commercial standpoint and a residential standpoint, but we will also want your input and ideas, and so, there will be a lot of citizen input, input by elected officials, and so, start thinking of items that you might want, items that you think need to be improved along the corridor, and we'll, in a very near span of time, have a kickoff meeting, we'd love to have your participation with your ideas and thoughts.
Mayor, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of motion, a motion on 8A, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8B, also from Mayor Pletko, 2013 through 2019, Dearborn Heights Communication Officers Agreement.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move city council concur with Mayor Dan Pletko, and approve the agreement between the city of Dearborn Heights and the Dearborn Heights Communications Officers, and ask that the clerk and the mayor sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in 8B.
Support. Support by Councilman Muscat, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8C, from Mayor Pletko, appointment to the Tifa and Brownfield Boards.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that council concurs with Mayor Dan Pletko, in the appointment of Mr. Donald Killian, who resides at 6711 Shadow Lawn, to the Tifa and Brownfield Board, and a term to expire in December 2020. This is to fill a vacancy as outlined in 8C.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Mayor Pletko, appointment to the, is that the two the same thing?
Yes.
Item eight, D.
Mr. Chairman?
Appointment to the Tifa and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Councilman Kaczynski?
I move council concur with the request of Mayor Pletko, and appoint Cheryl Wojcowski to fill a vacancy on the indicated board, in terms of where, December of 2019, details published in item D, letter of 9/5/17.
Support. Support by Councilman Muscat, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Want to thank Councilman Kaczynski for beating me to the punch, because I don't know if I could have pronounced that last name.
It's pronounced just like it's spelled.
Thank you, thank you.
Watch, watch your house.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8E, F and G.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move city council concur and approve the parade routes for the Star International Academy as outlined in 8E, Dearborn Heights Redskin Junior Football as an 8F, and the Annapolis High School Parade as outlined in 8G.
Support. Support by Councilman Abdulla, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item nine, reports from city officials, from administrative assistant Christine Laslow, revised public service request application sales agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
Move council agree with the request of Christie Laslow, to expend $4,450 for the electronic capability of transmitting issues that are reportable to various city departments, most specifically to the McIntyre Ordinance Section as indicated in 9A, letter of September 5, 2017.
Support.
Support by Councilman Berry, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Clayton?
Do we know when this app will be available, will be launched? I'm sorry? All right, thank you. There's not a date or, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
I find it interesting that everybody was silent, and let Councilman Kaczynski put this electronic issue to a vote. I've learned to pay attention to what the citizens have given me as instruction, and I'm slowly coming in the direction of using all of the updated stuff, and I need to pass them all very shortly.
I'm glad you stepped up, thank you. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8B, also from administrative assistant Christine Laslow, additional fiber?
9C, Mr. Chairman?
9C. 9B is canceled. 9B is canceled.
That's right. Next item on the agenda, item 9C, from Police Chief Lee Gavin, Fallen Officer Memorial Repair.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
Move council agree with Police Chief Gavin, requesting for the payment of invoices on funds expended for the improvement of the Fallen Officer Memorial, in the amount of $2,043.50. Apparently, this memorial had drastically needed some updating, and this is the step that is being taken, all under 9C.
Support.
Date September, August 23rd.
Support. Support by Councilman Abdulla, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9D, from Human Resource Director Elizabeth Supoda Perry, budget amendment.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move city council concur with the budget amendment for the Recreation Department as outlined in 9D.
Support. Support by Councilman Muscat, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Recreation Director Ken Greibel, reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
I move council concur with Recreation Director Ken Greibel, for the reappointment of Martin Sullivan, O'Sullivan, I'm sorry, Kelly Ferencik, and John Drapala, to the Recreation Commission, details in 9E, the letter dated September 5.
Support.
Support by Councilman Berry, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9F, also from Recreation Director Greibel, Wayne County Intergovernmental Agreement.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move city council concur with Mr. Greibel, and approve the enclosed IGA agreement between the city of Dearborn Heights and Wayne County, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on our behalf upon, contingent upon corporate council's review, final review of the contract.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski, so everybody notes, these are the tennis courts next to the Richard Young Center in the South End, I received some calls and emails regarding the tennis courts today, yes. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, might be worthy of note, the result of being prepared in three copies as requested.
Yeah, I outlined it in eight?
Was that outlined in 9E, you should?
Yes, I did. Outlined in 9F it is, yep.
9F, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9G, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, pavement marking.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
Move council concur with the request of Director Zimmer of the DPW, and approve the expenditure of some pavement markings within the city. The payment will be based on a previous project with no change in cost.
Support.
Support by Councilman Berry, any discussion?
All according to 9G, dated August 25th, thank you.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 13A, business license renewal for fetters on the beach.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muscat? I move council approve the business license for fetters on a beach at 5127 South Beach Daly Road, as outlined in 13A.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski, any discussion?
I kind of heard that as professors on the beach, rather than fetters, all right.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That ends the business portion of our meeting, are there any announcements from anybody at the table?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to follow up on something that Councilman Muscat was working on, and I thank him for, that was related to the newspapers that are delivered every Saturday, left at the end of your driveway, some of our residents, actually many residents have expressed concerns, and there was a lawsuit with Orient Township, and I spoke to their, their director at a meeting, and that lawsuit was dismissed, so I want to provide an update. What they recommended, what they ended up doing is, they had their legal talk to the newspaper's legal department, came to an agreement between the attorneys, that a point person would be established on behalf of the newspaper for that municipality, for that city, so that way, you have one person that's responsible for resolving the issues and the complaints, and they have found that that was very effective for them. They found their complaints are down, the issues are being resolved, so I wanted to just provide updates, so that way, our attorney is aware, as well as the council members, that that has seemed to work for that situation that most communities face, and our residents aren't so pleased with, the newspapers that are delivered, the advertisements on the weekends.
Mr. Chair?
Chairman?
Councilman Muscat, and then Councilman Kaczynski?
On the same subject, interesting that that comes to the table, I had a inquiry, and had the good luck of contacting somebody at a, at a live desk at the Free Press, and requested that this paperwork be discontinued, and if you call and make that request, they will honor that request, so.
That is true, because I've done the same, but I find that you get back on the list after a couple months.
If, if it persists, and it gets annoying, you'll pick up the phone again and annoy them again.
Absolutely, and just wanted to make it aware that there was an option here, because Councilman Muscat had brought that up previously, and thank you for doing that, and we were just following, because that was on our pending list at one time, just following what the outcome was of that lawsuit, and that's what I just wanted to provide an update.
Mr. Chair, along the same lines, would it be appropriate for us to ask Corporate Council Gary Miyake to call the legal office at the Detroit newspapers, and confirm, or did, you know, this, and see what we can do?
Call Lake Orion, call the city?
Well, it would be calling the Detroit Free Press, he said call the, the attorney, the legal department at the newspapers.
Mr. Chairman, there was another part to what, what my findings were, and that is that there are some people who want this delivered.
There's no, there's no question.
And, and if you leave it in the hands of the individual choice, you're not intruding on their personal likes and dislikes, which are one of our constitutional issues.
What, what the, the resolution that I had wrote, was that people that didn't want it, still call and still get it delivered, they get back on the list, and they keep, and then if you look throughout the city, people don't pick them up, and it turns into trash, and it is, it's wasteful paper, and it looks horrible. Now, if we can get a point person, if we can get that confirmed through our corporate council, and appoint a point person where this can be taken care of, instead of someone staying on a phone for 20 minutes to an hour, waiting for the newspapers to get back with you, and put you on the list, take you off the list, which, maybe corporate council can handle that?
I was just suggesting that we talk to, not the paper, they'll say, oh, you know, yeah, the lawsuit's over, we won, I mean, possibly that, we talked to the, the city involved, and the attorneys for the city involved.
No, that's not what the city, that's not what they said, they said to talk to the paper, that's what their attorneys did, the city's Orient Townships, their attorneys talked to the paper's attorney, they developed or established a point person, and it's kind of like in customer service, if you have a relationship with somebody in a business, and you have a problem, when you go to that person and talk to them one-on-one, because of your relationship, you're more likely to get it resolved quickly, and it's not to take away from those that want to keep the paper, it's to help with those that don't want the paper, and have found it challenging to get on the list where you're no longer getting it, because it is true, you get added back on the list after a while. a while, so that I think is, all I'm sharing is the recommendation that that seemed to work well to resolve an issue.
I think Corporate Counsel could contact whomever, both parties and find out and that way he's informed on the whole thing and he can take.
Yeah, because.
If it's this body's vote that he does it, I'd like to see that happen.
So, yeah, follow up with.
The newspaper.
With Lake Orion and the newspaper.
Because, yeah, they enacted an ordinance saying to ban it and then the news challenged it.
Well, if you want me to do it, I'll do it, although I think a little more expensive than perhaps someone else who might be in the administration, but whatever the pleasure of the council is and whatever the pleasure of the mayor, I'll do it.
Yeah, and then we can, you can think about or we can possibly talk about our own ordinances, but, yeah, why don't you go ahead and.
Okay.
Is everyone in agreement that to have the city attorney do that?
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have two items. One, I want to bring up the issue of the tickets on Trash Pickup Day. Just recently, we were informed by our police chief that they were no longer going to give tickets because they were being dismissed at a very high rate. I took it upon myself to go to the Justice Center one day last week and sat in a courtroom for, I guess it was a half hour to 40 minutes of listening to people's excuses for whatever infractions they did and then I was able to speak to our magistrate. The magistrate informed me that it wasn't that high of 50% and we talked about reasons why she was dismissing the cases and the biggest thing is the failure of communication between the city and its residents. And hanging in her office was the communication that was sent out by the trash pickup company, which didn't seem like it was a legal notice of no parking, along the fact that we don't have any no parking signs in the city, people that visit the city are getting ticketed. We also had discussions, this body had discussions with the administration to cascade down that people with no driveways were going to be allowed to park on the grass, yet they were still getting ticketed for parking on the grass. And also about parking on short driveways, blocking the sidewalk on trash pickup, they were still getting tickets. Now, we discussed this all, all of these scenarios we discussed and I truly believe that we decided that those people were going to get a reprieve for that one day on those infractions. Now, I think that police officers who give tickets out to people delivering meals on wheels, who come to people's homes to give health care, should be a little bit more conscious of what they're doing when they're being told that I'm a caregiver or I'm delivering meals on wheels, to use some good discretion on what's going on. The request also came from the courthouse that we look at the ordinance again as what the chief of police wanted us to do, is look at the, on changing maybe the timeframe of the, instead of seven to seven, change the time, most people leave for work about 7:30, 8 o'clock and return just after 5 o'clock, so if we have something that we can move around to match other cities for the timeframe, okay? And I think that we could hold GFL to a little bit of a, more of a schedule to get the trash picked up in a timeframe, even if they have to add a truck, I mean, 12 hours to do a route is a long time and we, you know, we had waste management very solemnly that I ever see a truck after 5 o'clock.
Yeah, but we have now recycling.
Well, we had recycling with waste management too. I recycled for years.
Not with the drums.
Well, they're, but they're automatically picked up, which makes it even quicker, okay?
Well, yeah, so, but we need to look at this in fairness to our police department, but that's something that, you know, this is an ordinance that we helped initiate and we paid our Corporate Counsel to write an ordinance that's not being upheld right now and that's what concerns me. We had the discussion and it would cost a fortune to post a sign on each street.
Well, I understand that, but you know what, we could have also have sent an official letter from the city, we send letters out all the time and a change in ordinance and I for one, know for a fact that I stood at that podium a year before we did, before I became a councilperson, knowing full well this was going to happen and I mentioned, let's get it started now, let's get people used to this. And as a councilperson after I was elected, a year before it happened, I said it and I said it multiple times, I said it this past January before we enacted in October, okay? So, it was not something new, we knew it was going to happen and we failed as a city, I believe we failed as a city to communicate with our citizens.
Well, so we can discuss adjusting or changing.
And I believe we need to set up something to do this, so that's what I'm asking this honor body to do.
We can do that, we can. Chief, do you have any thoughts on this issue?
No, just recommend a study session so we can move forward on this. You know, we've been enforcing it for the last 10 months and I hate to have everything go by the wayside and let everyone, you know, park on the street, we need to re-educate them, so come across and come up with an ordinance like Councilman Ray said, you know, let the people maybe park after 5 o'clock, but then we have to work in conjunction with the DPW, make sure they're done cleaning the streets, so maybe between DPW and the council, we can come up with something. You know, Ray was there in court and, you know, people come in with legitimate reasons and it's hard for a magistrate to, you know, find someone guilty when maybe they're an older person, they don't have a driveway or whatever, so maybe if we readdress the issue so we can go back to, we're putting out stickers now on the trash cans, we still respond on the calls, we're going out there, we're advising the people, but maybe we can come up with a little different procedure.
Absolutely. Director Zimmer, so if someone parks in the street and the trash truck comes along, I mean unless the car is in front of the trash cans, which I don't think usually it is, is it a real problem for the GFL?
Yeah, the whole purpose is for it to be automated, I mean, if the driver has to get out every time and move the can to a position where it can be loaded into the truck, it defeats the whole purpose.
Mr. Chairman, I would also recommend that we, I'm not so certain that the magistrate's decisions have been appropriate and I would not necessarily agree with that, I mean, I'm sure we have a caregiver who's coming, someone who's not aware, but I will need to see more with regard to that. Certainly if the city wants to communicate through a letter or some other way with residents to make sure that they're aware of this, that certainly would be a great idea in terms of enforcement, but I have a real problem with the idea that we're supposed to have everything posted all over the place when we have an ordinance that's been consistently enforced and we're expecting, you know, we have a lot of ordinances that pertain to things and we don't expect that we have a notice, a sign up everywhere allowing people to end up knowing that they're not supposed to be parking their car on the street on trash day or, let's say, a snow day or something along those lines. We rely on a notification and on the city website and we rely on an ordinance that's been adopted, we don't end up having to have, you know, notices for every day of the week along with signs on the street in order to enforce that.
Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to point out that the ordinance was also included in the Dearborn Heights Today Newsletter that went out to every residence, so.
Councilman Musket?
It would be, I think, best for Corporate Counsel to speak with the magistrates involved and get their feeling on why this is happening. I sat with them for almost an hour and spoke with them. I'm not an attorney, so I don't know the way the law specifically reads, they're both lawyers, they know the law also, so it may behoove you to speak with them before anything is done and said, so we can get a feedback from you, Mr. Miyake.
Yeah, and Councilman, I'll probably want to speak to you about this before I would end up speaking to them, so thank you.
Yeah, let's set up a study session and talk about adjusting our ordinance, but, you know, it's, parking is a problem, as I mentioned, it would be prohibitively expensive to post every.
Well, I understand that.
We'll get that set up. Any other announcements? Mike?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor, just want to talk about a couple of upcoming events. Tuesday, September 19th, at Carolyn Candy Library, at 6:30 PM, we will be having a program on the last hobo, before Dearborn resident Dan Grajek was a marketing professional and English teacher, he was a hobo hitchhiking and hopping trains from New York to California. Join us as he discusses his experience and memories from his adventures. Next, I want to make a couple of announcements regarding Nolan Cemetery. On Friday, November 10th, at 3:00 PM, we will be doing an unveiling of the Nolan Cemetery historical marker. Come join us as we do a brief historical overview of the Nolan family and finalize a community project a couple of years in the making. Relating to this, some people in the community have expressed interest in helping to clean up the site, so to have some community involvement, we will be having a Nolan Cleanup Day on Saturday, October 28th at 9:00 AM, with a possible backup day of November 4th, should weather not allow participation on October 28th. We also are looking for someone good with stains, if you think you're really good with stains and wood, to spruce up the existing sign. If you're interested in doing either of these, please give me a call at 313-791-3804 and leave a message with your name and phone number so I can get some kind of idea as to participation. Finally, I want to thank some people and groups that have helped us greatly thus far with Nolan, thanks to DPW for all the work they have done and continue to do, be some more things upcoming, thanks to Crestwood National Honor Society, thanks to Harry Dunn for clearing off a great deal of brush around the headstones. And last but not least, thanks to two gentlemen, Chet Domon and Tom Sargola, who have worked tirelessly to straighten, correct, and fix stones at Nolan and are kind of in overdrive getting a couple more done and have supported the project for some time, so that's all for now, thanks for your time and see you at the library.
What's the marker dedication date again?
It would be Friday, November 10th at 3:00 PM.
Okay.
Fortunately, sunset's at 5, so I kind of have to do it during the day at some point, I figured cemetery at sunset might have a nice look to it, so I'll go with that.
Mike, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, and we have Jim Pease from the American Legion who has an announcement. Jim, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, I'm not here to complain, so. My name is James Pease, I am a member of the Knights of Columbus Fourth Degree in Dearborn and a member of the American Legion in Dearborn and on the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council. This past year, our assembly, along with St. Hedwick Cemetery, together for this, came together for this nationwide program called Wreaths Across America. In December each year, cemeteries, together with communities, join to remember, honor, and teach that freedom we enjoy today are not free. This year, we will be reaching out to our schools of our communities to join with us in the lane of wreaths, providing music, with representatives from each of the schools placing seven ceremonial wreaths at the veterans' memorial. It is our hope to place 1,000 wreaths this year on the graves of veterans and work to grow yearly. There are 10,000 veterans interned at St. Hedwick's. Someday, we hope, each will receive a wreath with their name said aloud, so they are not forgotten. We look forward to working with our communities and building this program for future generations. Flyers will be available next week that will provide all the necessary information to donate. All monies go directly to Wreaths Across America online or by a mail in form. Mail in forms must be received no later than December 15th. Thank you. This day that we do Wreaths Across America is December 16th, it falls on, I believe, the third Saturday or the second Saturday of each month, or each year in December, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Musket?
I go to the cemetery quite often, I'm there weekly and I know people are here, I believe the mayor's executive secretary, Christina, is there all the time cleaning up family members' graves, I see her there before. If you have any influence with the management at the cemetery, as I travel and I go to different locations, I see a lot of our veterans' headstones sunken in, barely being able to be read at, you know, and I've talked to them, the directors, myself, and I would like to see those raised without somebody having to go there and say, this one, this one, that one. They know where these veterans are buried, they should be, those are the ones that should be taken care of. I, you know, have my family there, so I, when their stones need to be raised, I go to the office and I get it done, but they know these veterans, their families are long deceased, no one's there for them anymore. If you have any influence, if you can get them to raise those stones so we can actually visit them and recognize who they are, I would greatly appreciate that.
I will do my best.
I thank you very kindly.
I've been working with Dave, in fact, we are working with him to hopefully build a new veterans' memorial in the center of the cemetery. I know, once I put the letter to the Board of Directors, they have directed Dave to draw up some new plans and how the future would look for the cemetery. And I know they diligently work to take care of those graves and I have talked to them, even my father's grave, I've had to go out and get the stone raised on that one, the plaque, because it was down in the ground, so.
But those are something that you and I can handle when we know the individual, they're family members, but those who are deceased, who have no family members anymore, those grave sites seem to be forgotten.
They are no longer forgotten.
Well, I hope they're not forgotten because it breaks my heart when I go there and I see them in that, sometimes I say I'm going to bring my big pry bar and a bucket of sand and dirt and lift them myself, but I'm afraid to break the headstone.
No, you don't want to do that.
Okay.
They will replace them.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Jim, thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other announcements? Hearing none, any residents want to come up and state your name and your street, former Councilman Ned Piggin, go ahead. Why don't you hand it to Denise, she can hand it down to.
Ned Piggin, Rosetta Street. This past Memorial Day, when I came back from my vacation, I noticed that one of the recent homeowners in Military Hills who has bought a house on the corner of Elizabeth and Longview has decided to cut as many as 40 trees as I can, as I can cut and they've been busy stumping them, so it's hard to tell. This is a picture of this, which I did this afternoon, I'd like to pass to show you. Now, I know we have a tree ordinance here, I have always said when I was on the council, it isn't written the paper it's written, it isn't worth the paper it's written on and I read it, it's not too bad, but I think my additions to it, which I've talked about for years and passed out to the previous council members, the reason colored ink is expensive and if you want to make copies, I'll have to give it to you, but I was trying to come here. Something is wrong with that ordinance or the administration of it, I hate to see, I love Mr. Zimmer, he's always good to me, every time I call him, he responds to me, something's wrong. Something's wrong in the Arbor City, if you can do that. And a couple of the neighbors told me, that guy must know somebody over there, I said, I can't believe anybody knows anybody that will let you do that. Now, you could look at those pictures, the mayor will remember on the corner of Elizabeth and Bonner, we had the police there, we had to handcuff that individual. Recently, the point I want to make is. Recently, the point I want to make is, that house was sold for $960,000. And my point is, with the residents, we are only stewards of the land while we reside there. And the reason for that is, I told Dave Abdella one day, "The average mortgage is about six and a half years, 75 months." And he told me, "No, you're wrong. It's five years," which makes it worse. It's good for the city. As the houses change, the taxes go up. I've been in mine 46 years, and I don't want to tell you what my tax rate is. The rest of you will get mad. But thank God for Proposal A and Headley and all the other ideas. But, other than that, that guy that cut down a grove of trees, Mayor, if you remember, and he went, he said, "I don't care. I'll pay. I got the money to pay for it. He'll pay $2,000 a tree." It ain't the point. It ain't the point. The point is that I'm willing to come and discuss this tree ordinance with the council at a special meeting. I don't want to go through this even in captions, but the point is, you're only a steward of the land. And if you have certain rights, and they are, if you wish, in my opinion, to suggest your dying, if you want to make an addition to your property and the tree is in the way of your pool, your sidewalk, your garage, it should be removed at no penalty. By penalty, I mean a replacement, which we have the Tree Reserve Fund. If a tree is diseased or damaged by storm and it's on your property, you shouldn't be penalized for having to replace it, either by finances in the fund or replacing the tree by the number of three-inch diameters it takes to compensate for a 24-inch tree. These things are... However, if you, out of the will and whim, decide that you want to cut down a tree that's bothering nobody because you, or you don't like to clean up the leaves, the answer to that is, okay, I say, you can cut down 10% of the trees on your property, but you have to pay into the tree fund ordinance, and you got to replace the tree. You don't have to replace it on your property. The city's got plenty of places to replace it. It's relatively simple. Now, in that formula, there is something I wrote that doesn't make any sense. It says there's a percentage of how you replace a tree. It doesn't make any sense when you, to talk about some of the things I did at the end, like if you cut down a 48-inch tree, you got to replace it with a 50-inch, you can't replace it with a 50-inch diameter tree. You can buy trees, two and a half, three inches, 12, 15 feet high, from anywhere from $300 to $500. This idea that you can replace a tree with a twig is ridiculous. But if you look at that lot, anybody that, it's just upsetting to see they ruined the neighborhood, 40 trees. I can't believe anybody gave them permission to do that. The council members can look at the pictures. I will leave this, I don't want to take more time than justified for one person, but I'll leave this with the chairman to make copies. But the only thing that's ridiculous here is this percentage of which you have to, you replace the number of trees with a three-inch tree, 15 feet high. If you cut down a 24-inch one, that's eight you got to replace. And if you cut down a city tree in the right way, you're going to pay and you're going to replace the trees, and you can put it on your taxes because you're going to get a good bill, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000, and you can do it that way. This is not going to be the Arbor City. I can't tell you how many times I call Mr. Zimmer and say, "I seen a tree go down." Thank God, as an architect, when the first thing I do, I see trees, I do anything I can to preserve them, I'll change the size of that house or its location. Thank you very much, and I'd be happy to meet any of you personally or come to a study session.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make copies of this. I'll make copies of this one.
I gave one to each of them because I know they don't have it. If the rest of them could, I'd give it to the clerk.
I think he did.
The pictures you can make.
Do you want the pictures, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. You want those back? Do you need these back, or Chairman? Mr. Chair?
Forty trees. So I gave copies to them because I know they don't have it. The rest of them, you know, I seen it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, former Councilman Piggin. Anyone else, please come up and state your name and the street you live on.
I don't think I need this, Mike. My name is Nancy Brier, Colgate Street. My parents were Robert and Genevieve Woods, for those who maybe don't know the association. Both were very active in the city. My mother was appointed to chair the Senior Citizens Commission for Dearborn Heights by Mayor Van Houten, and my father served with Mr. Titus on the Tifa Board. I, myself, have lived in both the north and south parts of the city, but now reside on Colgate Street where I was at age four. It's been my plan to follow in their footsteps and be involved. April and May of 2016, I brought it to the mayor's attention that there would be an opening on the Tifa Board and that I was interested. His response was, "You got it. Just get a letter to Carmite." I then presented a two-page letter with my credentials to the mayor and was told he'd take care of it. I never heard anything after that. Then I heard, well, also a friend of mine from the South End had also expressed interest at that time in the position. I then read in the P&amp;G, Press and Guide, about a new appointee. I've since learned of three appointments, like you just did two tonight. However, none of these people reside in the Tifa District. To this day, well, is it because no one in the district is qualified in the South End that you can't appoint someone who actually lives in that district? Or is it just favoritism? To this day, I remain disillusioned and disappointed in the fact that you don't get considered when you've asked to be considered in that fashion. And then, I have one other little thing. It has come to my attention that at least four or five city officials are collecting pensions and paychecks for the same job. I was under the impression that you had to retire to get a pension. Are we double-dipping here, or is that not a problem for the rest of you? And finally, something simple. Our Neighborhood Association, Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association, has meetings on the third Thursday of the month, September 21st, and we will be having our assessor and someone from the Tifa Board speaking, and you're all invited to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, please get up and state your name and the street you live on?
I'm looking to the administration and the end of the council to try to find out what's going on with our home. I keep hearing from the state, or waiting for the approval from the state by paperwork. In June, 1st of June and the 1st of August, we were told by email that the approval, verbal approval, was given. But following one week later would be the paperwork. We're still waiting. This is coming up since November 1st, a first appraisal, a second appraisal, that was supposed to go easier than the first, quicker. I'd like to get rid of my home. I can't get any answers.
Well, so you've been here before.
Yep.
The city is, you're not getting rid of your home. The city's buying the property.
Yep.
As far as the status of the specifics, that's really for the...
We keep being told and everybody else on the block in the past meetings that we're waiting for the state. If we're also being told that the verbal has been given and the paperwork is going to follow in a week, June, 1st of June, 1st of August, what's the date today? We can't keep relying on, "I'll let you know when I find out." It's been discussed before that there's weekly meetings with the state. Can the question not be asked, "What's going on?", or can we get some answers of what's going on? I'd like to get rid of my home before the anniversary of a year of this. When it was proposed, this was all going to be an easy one-two-three thing. We got the FEMA, you guys got the money, we're going to buy the homes. I'm stuck with two house payments. Something that, in the last meeting, Danny McWilliams was told, "Don't go buy another house. Don't overextend yourself." I did that on the first appraisal because we were agreed on our way out. I'm stuck. I'm looking for help. I have called council people, I've called the administration, I can't get any answer. I'm here again, asking if someone can give, get some help. Do we not know who we talk to in the state on a weekly matter? I know we only work four days a week, but if the meeting is there once a week, somebody's got to know what's going on when the dates are so far behind.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the specifics of your particular deal, that's for the person you're dealing with in the city to update you with. There's nothing that the...
If you were in, if you were in the spot of the people of Hanover and myself as well, what would you do? How would you get by this? You can't, you can't get any answers. You can't sit there anymore and just wait. It's nerve-wracking. If we get a flood again and the houses get hit, is that going to affect the appraisals? Is another question. We're wanting to get out.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Musket?
You and I have spoke on more than one occasion, and believe me, my heart goes out to you. As I told you over the phone, there's nothing I personally can do because it's not a council matter. It stems from either the state, the state police, or the administration. And I can't begin to tell you where to go. Honest to God, I don't know, and I don't think anybody in this council...
Yeah, and it's not our job to...
Well, regardless if it's our job or not, if we don't know, we don't know.
You were part of this, Councilman. When you voted to approve all this, and you were part of this.
And I'm not bucking that responsibility.
Understood.
I'm not, okay? Because I, every time a house has come up for approval, every one of us, we never even hesitated or anything. We approved it. We said yes, okay? Now, where the hang-up is, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I'm not privy to that paperwork or discussing with people from the state or from the state police. That is not my function as a council person to do that, okay? We rely on other people to do that and administrate it. So I really don't even know who you can talk to on the state level. I mean, I thought, one time I asked if you called Debbie Dingell's office, and I believe you did, I don't know if you've got, got an answer from there.
You referred back to the administration of Dearborn Heights. And if you recall, when I introduced myself, I asked for the city and the administration.
Correct.
There's two people here that can answer these questions, and I guess there's other people that can ask them, other than me, what's going on? Why can't we make a phone call? Who can we talk to? I'd like to find out who the state is, person is. I'd like to call them and ask them what's going on. Maybe I could get a little further. I don't know.
But, yeah, the seller doesn't deal directly with the state. The city administers the grant, if I'm correctly correct.
Let me tell you, because you said the city's buying these homes. The city is not buying these homes.
Right, right.
It is, it is a grant for FEMA because they set aside so much money. We applied for the grant, and it is administered by the state police. And every single decision comes through their office. So we are, we are, we cannot, I, the administrators, cannot go ahead and make a decision. I just recently had a neighbor on that street come to me because they had a problem with the particular appraisal. They went out and got another appraisal. That same day when she brought it in, we sent it up to Lansing. Our recommendation is that they, the state honor that second appraisal. As far as I know, we have not...
That's a separate, they, they send it out, it's a separate.
Okay. But it is, the holdup is not in my office. I'd like nothing better than to get them the money and close the particular thing out. There's no, there's, there's no advantage for us sitting there and waiting on stuff. But I will tell you that the state of Michigan doesn't, you can send something up to the state police, and he decides when he's going to look at it. So it's not a matter that, he's not waiting there for work to do, and then, but this is not the first program he's administered, but we are reliant. The other problem that came up is they didn't like the appraiser, and we had a discussion about that.
We did.
More than one person indicated that they thought there was a good basis for the state of Michigan to have made a decision on that particular individual. And that had a delay on this entire process.
So, yeah, we appreciate your frustration, but...
I've got two emails from Chrissy Lazoff, 1st of June, 1st of August, telling me that the state gave her the verbal and that the paperwork would follow within a week. I am asking the definition from those dates to today, what's going on? If the state has told her, "Yes, I'm going to do it," but I haven't sent you the document yet, I'm going to send it a week later. Like I said, the 1st of June and the 1st of...
It's not true. It's not.
I have it on my phone, and I can show it to everybody on the council.
Please do.
I'd love to.
What it's not...
Who would like to see it first?
But it's not saying that, right?
It's exactly, not only that, but you asked me what closing date I would like.
Please, one at a time.
That's what, in response to yours.
Mr. Willis, yeah?
I said, "I got the verbal. I can't make a decision until I get the paperwork." And then you said, "Well, when would you get the paperwork?" And the state said...
Which you answered in high caps.
Yeah, and I've been answering in high caps. It says, "As soon as I hear something, I will let you know." To say four days a week on this project is not true. I was there Saturdays and Fridays with your neighbors. I know you're no longer there, but to say that, that's a slam. That's, I have responded...
Saturdays and Sundays, and I've never heard from you or seen you since this whole thing. I'll read you your letter.
I don't live there anymore.
I just got, I just got the, it doesn't matter if I don't live in the house or any longer, I still own it.
Everybody, hold on, hold on.
Let me know when you want me to read the emails.
Hold on.
I have called and I have emailed, "As soon as I hear something."
Let me know.
We can meet after the meeting and go over this. We're not going to settle it shouting across the room. We're not going to do it, okay?
I'm just, I'm asking questions and I'm being told that I'm wrong. I got it in print here from her email. I'll gladly let you read it.
We're not going to settle it.
I'm just asking someone to call the state and follow through with it.
I understand this, okay?
Who am I meeting with? I'd like to know.
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
So, but we're not going to settle it, like I said, getting into shouting...
I don't think it's going to settle it, but that's why I keep coming to you guys and asking for help. I can't get a step forward on it.
We know it's frustrating.
My bank account's not getting a step forward either, I can tell you that. It's not fair.
Not, Chrissy.
But out of fairness, Mr. Chair? Out of fairness, Chrissy, I mean, have you contacted the state and have they given you any type of an answer, or do they?
Yes.
I'm just curious.
Out of fairness, Councilman, yes. I contact the state and I have weekly discussions with them.
What do they say?
And out of fairness, like I told you, as soon as I get an answer, I will let them know. And I've done that on nights and weekends. They have questions on the appraisal, they have to run it through their people. I don't have an answer yet. When I get an answer, I will. The state is not holding anything up because they don't have, they don't have manpower, but they're not holding anything, it's not sitting on somebody's desk. It's fluid, but it's not bad.
Is there a meeting that's coming up that they got to make that decision on, or...
No, exactly what he said, not exactly. I got a verbal. The cost isn't the issue. They have to go through that appraisal with the fine-tooth comb. They did it because of what happened last time with the other appraisers, and it takes the state hired appraiser when they give me the questions, or when they, when they give me, when they give it to me in writing, I'll give it to them. But it's not that, there are questions back and forth with our appraiser and the state. There's not, it's not sitting on somebody at the state levels. It's not forgotten about.
I'll meet with you and we'll discuss it as soon as we're done. Anyone else, please get up and state your name and the street you live on?
Denise Malinowski Maxwell, Clairview Drive. It's in regards to the Meals on Wheels ticket situation. I currently volunteer for Meals on Wheels at Berwyn, and I learned from Ray that there was a problem with some of the drivers getting ticketed. At the Berwyn Center, all of our drivers have a sign for their dashboard stating that they are a Meals on Wheels driver. When I became aware of the situation, Dan at the time was in charge, and he agreed to fax a copy of our dashboard signed to every one of the Meals on Wheels locations to avoid this situation in other areas in the future. So I hope it resolves the situation. So I hope it resolves the situation. If there's any more problems, let me know, and I'll make them, I'll have them fax it again.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you. Yeah, and I mean, the issue, the whole issue is, we'll do what we can, but, and I don't know that the, I'd like to hear the thoughts of our city attorney, the magistrate just saying, "Well, we're gonna dismiss every ticket that comes in." I mean, you can't.
Well, we don't necessarily have that authority, and a number of years ago, we had an issue with a magistrate doing that, that very much upset former Mayor Ruth Canfield. And then I was directed to appeal every single one of those decisions, and the problem went away. So basically, sometimes our magistrates make decisions based on what they think the law should be, as opposed to what the law is. That is one of the reasons I'm saying this, and not saying things couldn't be improved. I am saying, however, that sometimes they make decisions, and they don't have an adequate basis for doing so.
Yes.
If that's indeed the case, then I'll appeal all the decisions, I'll go up to the district court judge, and then maybe it will end up changing. But if we have things that we can improve on, certainly we can investigate that. But, you know, the idea that they might not like an ordinance is not an acceptable basis for them to end up dismissing out tickets.
I'd like to, Chairman, we'll see if we can improve on the ordinance, and, you know, the no parking on trash days. Anyone else? Councilman Berry?
No, no, I was gonna motion to adjourn.
I wasn't gonna say anything. Deborah on England, Silver Lane. I honestly just think this is ridiculous, that we have to keep talking to these freaking trashcans. Oh, my God, this is ridiculous. How does every other city that has trashcans like ours and has an ordinance survive? Oh, my God. I mean, we act like the whole sky is falling. You're not gonna get a sign on every street, just like we know not to park in front of the fire hydrants. No, the ordinance is, this is where we live, people. You see that we get new trashcans. We've sent out three, four notices. We've talked about it, oh, I don't know, 100 hours, it seems like, in city council meetings. I mean, the police are out there doing their job and ticketing the people. I've watched the garbage people have to get physically out of their vehicle to take the trashcan, because there's cars parked on the street. I think we need to start holding the magistrate responsible, or get rid of the magistrate and get somebody that'll do their job. The police are doing their job, and they should be commended for doing that, because I'm sure that they have much better things to be doing than writing tickets on trash day. This is ridiculous. The ordinance is fine the way it is, just don't park on the darn street. It's not that hard, people. It really just isn't, that's all.
We'll see if we can improve on the ordinance. Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Good evening, everyone.